Good evening and welcome to the Cabarrus County Board of Education's October the 4th, 2021 Work Session. The Board has recently been in closed session. We have reconvened into open session. And I would say, welcome to the viewing audience that is with us tonight. And if everyone would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Board members, may I have a motion that the October 4th, 2021 Work Session agenda be approved as presented?
So moved.
I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell and a second by Ms. Adcock. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And we will begin with items under 6.01. I also need a motion that the closed session minutes for August the 16th, 2021, September the 7th, 2021, and September the 13th, 2021 be approved as presented.
So moved.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that was Ms. Blackwell on the motion and Mr. Farr on the second. Moving to 6.02, may I have a motion that the October 4th, 2021 Administrative Recommendation be approved as presented?
So moved.
I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell and a second by Mr. Walter. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Moving to items under number seven, which is the approval of our minutes. May I need a motion that the Board approve the minutes for the open session meetings for August the 16th, 2021, and September the 7th, 2021?
So moved.
I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell and a second by Mr. Farr. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Now, we will move down to items under number eight. And we'll start with Board Chair comments. I would just like to inform everyone that the task force did meet last week. They reconvened for the first time. And it was a very productive meeting. Dr. Kapiki, this was his first. So he was able to be introduced to all the task force members. And even though the metric portion of that task force has met, and there will be some recommendations coming to the Board, and Dr. Kapiki will probably speak to that just a little bit later on. The complete idea to have the task force come back is to actually start looking at, you know, this year is so different from last year. And I know everybody said, well, you know, they've done their work, and now what do we do from here? But what we do from here does look different because this year, we have 100% of our kids in the capacities back in schools where last year, it was only 40 when we returned. Virtual learning is different, somewhat from remote learning, and they're all working with that. There are a lot of schools, a lot of campuses, a lot of principals that are doing really, really good jobs with virtual learning. And I know that we have a lot of emails that come in, and we have a lot of concerns with some areas in there. But they're going to be talking with it. There's going to be a lot of streaming among the principals that are doing this really well, and a lot of sharing. So they will be doing their work, and then that will be presented to us pretty much, much like last year was with the recommendations that they moved forward on their progress. So I just wanted to give you all an opportunity to speak to that or ask questions if you would like to tonight. And Ms. Adcock, I'll start with you.
I was in the meeting, so I really don't have any specific questions about that at this time.
Since you and Ms. Sandage are on the task force, can you speak to it just a little bit more? I know I didn't get to stay on very long. I know there was a lot of discussion about the metrics and what's going to be presented. Do you have any comments or statements regarding that?
I think what my understanding was that we were going to continue to follow the recommendations of the Cabarrus Health Alliance, that the measurements that we had in place were going to be consistent, and that there weren't going to be any changes made at this time.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Ms. Carpenter?
Well, and that was my question, and that's what they're going to do. They're just, is our superintendent going to give us update?
We are.
Okay.
He will be doing that just a little bit.
And so, is he going to give it to us tonight? Or when is he going to give us this update?
In his superintendent comments.
Oh, okay.
Or then at the COVID-19, that's on the agenda already.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Farr?
I have no comments. I'll just wait on the superintendent's comments.
Okay. Mr. Walter?
Again, we're waiting for an objective measure to determine when we can make these masks optional for the parents, students, and staffs.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Blackwell.
That was actually going to be my question. If we were going to ask questions, if during that meeting, y'all discussed any actual numbers of when you would be willing to make the mask optional. So.
Ms. Sandage?
I don't have any questions or comments. I'll ditto with Ms. Adcock said already. I'm already a participant on the task force. And the first meeting, from my opinion, was kind of just getting to know and understanding what the task is at hand, and also getting to introduce Dr. Kapiki to the team. So I think a lot of work will come in the meetings that follow, but not a lot other than reviewing what the metrics team completed was taken care of during that meeting, in my opinion.
So question, did y'all discuss what the metrics team had put forth during?
We did.
You did?
We did.
I just wanted to make sure. Okay, great. All right. Thank you. And now, I will turn it over to Dr. Kapiki for superintendent comments.
I'll take a breath of all the recording reports.
Sure.
Do I need you?
Absolutely. Do you have any other comments, or was that it?
No.
Okay. All right. Okay, we will move to Board Attorney comments. Mr. White?
We do not have anything.
Nothing at all? Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, then, Dr. Kapiki, it's back to you for the COVID-19.
So I have a couple of slides for you this evening to review where we are right now with COVID. And I'll answer some of your questions regarding the task force, and then some updates on our numbers, and also some exciting news that I can share with you from the state this evening. So you can see currently, the same information you've been getting now for the last several months in terms of what the Cabarrus case data looks like. Right now, the big number is 9.2% the positivity rate, and the rest of the data is there for you to review. But again, our positivity rate is starting to decline, which is good news. I think we're all optimistic that it's going to continue to go down, and that we're starting to get a handle on the virus. Second date is the testing data that the Cabarrus Health Alliance gives us on a weekly basis. You can see there are over 6,200 cases, excuse me, tests last week resulting in that 9.2% positivity rate. You can see over the last probably six or seven weeks, a slow, one, two, three, about six weeks of decline. You see the percentage of positivity going down, which is encouraging. Another slide to show you some of the same information in terms of the Cabarrus County Schools COVID data. When you take a look at the quarantines, you'll see that our quarantines, we peaked at the end of August around 1,079 cases. Currently, we have 362 students under quarantine. And we're going to talk a little bit about that, I believe, in the next slide. You can see the various numbers for the positives, the blue line. We had 125 positives last week. You can again, starting to see it slope slightly downward. It's downward from where it was a week ago, which is encouraging news. And you can see the other data for middle and high school below. This is the most recent data that we have on the positives. You look at September 27th, you have 125 positives for that week, the breakdown between the elementary, middle, and high schools. And of that 125 positives, they have resulted in 362 quarantines. 21 of those quarantines have become positive, or a 6% rate of our current quarantines have turned positive, which again, is an encouraging number. I want you to remember that number because it's the 94% that we want to be thinking about in a moment, and I can explain to you why. If 6% are turning positive, and 94% are not, and are still quarantined, that's kind of the issue. That's the issue we've been talking about. How do we better get those students back into school? And that's what I'm going to share with you in a minute. I think we have a very good path forward to do that. And then the next meeting with the local leaders is scheduled for October 11th. We've gone to a biweekly call with the Cabarrus Health Alliance, and that's the schedule we have there. So I'm going to, Susan Burns is going to come up and share the metric with you in a moment, but I want to share with you something that we've been working on just recently over the last two weeks. I reached out to Dr. Tilson, who works with the, she's a State Health Department employee. I want to say director, but I don't want to give her the wrong title. But anyway, Dr. Tilson was great. She got back to me within a day, and she arranged a conversation I was able to have with Walker Wilson, who was the Assistant Secretary for Policy for the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. And what I asked him about was a test and stay policy that I'm starting to see pop up around the United States. What that is, is if a student is considered a quarantined situation, then we can continue to test that student. As long as they stay negative, they can stay in school. So you test them, and if they're negative, they stay. Simple enough. If they're positive, they follow the appropriate quarantines. At that time, Walker had said to me that they were looking into it, and that they would get, she would get back in touch with me. And I said, well, if you do this, Cabarrus is interested in this because we want to keep our kids in school. So if you go back to that, 6% of our quarantines turned positive, but 94% of them are still in quarantine. If we have a test and stay policy in play, that 94% of students, they would be able to stay in school as long as they stay negative. Follow me? So then they test on the, not the recommendation, the initiative, I believe, is going to try and test them the first, third, fifth, and seventh day. And as long as a child stays negative, they can stay in school. So it's a very positive step because we could just basically, I don't want to say eliminate quarantines, but we can really dramatically reduce those quarantines on some of those students that we all know could still be in school, but they're being quarantined. Rightfully so, but we're trying to work with the assets and the information at our hands to better able to get those kids in school. So she sent back to me today, and she said that she mentioned that this is an ABC Science Collaborative. They're initiating the study to evaluate the test and stay option for students and staff who have been exposed to COVID in school settings. This study's been approved by the Duke IRB, and has also been approved by Dr. Betsy Tilson in her role as State Health Director, and of course, with the Control Measure Rule 10 NCAC 41A 0201E. Because of the scientific and public health of the study, it has to be approved. So the conversation is going to take place this Wednesday, October 6th. And I'm going to be part of that conversation with the state. There are several other county school systems that are going to be involved in this pilot study. And they've told me that we can become involved in this study, that we could be part of the people that are going to pilot this particular study. So I find that very encouraging. And in the last hour, I've already received a communication from Dr. Benjamin, who is the Kaiser Area Distinguished Professor of Pediatrics at Duke University, who's going to lead the conversation on Wednesday. So I'm going to attend that conversation on Wednesday with the anticipation to allow us to become part of this test and stay pilot, and hopefully that ends up reducing our quarantines dramatically and solves a lot of the problem. Now, the caveat is this. Sue's going to share with you the metrics that the task force recommended, and I'm going to digress for a moment. But the task force, truth to point with what everyone said, was more of a meet and greet for me to get to know those on the task force and to kind of find out what some of the issues were and some of the conversations over the last several months. But I asked two questions, and I asked them to put their concerns in a chat box, and that we would address that, their concerns, at a meeting on October 14th at 3:30. So we're going to try and meet with them every two weeks with the task force to kind of go over some of the issues and concerns they have, and also to collaborate with them and get some of their suggestions, and bring it back to the whole team, and see if some of the things that they're recommending or proposing could help us effectively handle COVID and other issues better. But a lot of their concerns, the first question I asked was to talk to me about your concerns regarding COVID. What are your concerns? What are your current concerns? What has you most worried or uptight? Quarantine's the big issue that came out. There were 18 different concerns, but when you compose them all together, quarantine is the big issue. The bus driver shortages and delays, what ours is going to speak about tonight, was another concern. Misinformation was a big concern they had. They want to make sure they're getting accurate information. Stress on the hospitals, the schools, and the services were concerns. Lack of substitute teachers, which we all know is a big problem. Contact tracing, quarantines, quarantines, quarantines. Things of that nature are the consistent, common themes that came out of it. The second question was to talk a little bit about our virtual learning situation. We have a system in place, but we asked the question, what suggestions do you have or thoughts do you have about maybe improving that virtual experience for a child that's quarantined? So we want to know what their thoughts are on that. And they gave us four or five different suggestions as to what we could take a look at. I can tell you that we're looking at, we're also looking at another district in the country, something unique that they're doing to see if maybe we can apply that to the Cabarrus County system for our quarantine students. I don't want to really say much on that yet because I want to do a little more homework and research on it, but what I can assure you is this, we're constantly looking to improve and be better, and we are reaching out and trying to collaborate with the community on that. So I'm going to stop there. With the test and pilot study, what I will say to you is, one of the caveats is you have to be masked. And what I want to say to the Board is this, we're at 9.2%. Sue's going to show you some of the different recommendations that the task force gave you. The mitigating things that we're doing now are keeping our kids in school. And what I want to emphasize to everyone is, our goal is to keep kids in school. I hope and pray someday, we can take the masks off of all the kids. But right now, that mitigating factor is helping keep our kids in school. The big issue is the quarantine issue. How do we get those kids that are quarantined that really could be in school, in school safely? I believe the test and stay pilot study and that process is a really positive step forward to be able to do that. If we can implement that, stay the course of mitigating factors, we're going to increase the amount of kids that are in school, decrease our quarantines, and then continue to monitor the data and the positivity rate in our community, and work with the Cabarrus Health Alliance to hopefully at one, some point, you know, be either mask optional or totally masked off. But I would tell you now, the other thing that we need to be thinking about is, we are lacking substitutes. We are lacking bus drivers. We are lacking school health personnel. Dr. Bisshas gave you a report on some of the vacancies that we're looking for. You don't need to look much further than that vacancy report to see how stretched and thin we are from a personnel standpoint, that we need people. So I would encourage all of us to reach out to, and within our community, to seek people that are looking for employment in different professions, because it's across the board. The system, Cabarrus County Schools doesn't just employ teachers. It's a big employer across the county for a lot of different things. And if we lessen up on our mitigating strategies, and COVID starts to spread amongst some of our adult population, or hits our bus drivers, or hits our cafeteria workers, or hits our support staff, or hits our teachers, it becomes really difficult. It's, every day is a challenge to make sure we keep the doors open. Our goal is to have kids in school, to be, have live instruction every single day this year. That's our goal. So I want to just reinforce that and say to the Board that we are trying and reaching out to every different avenue to increase and improve what we do on a daily basis. I'm excited about this test and stay pilot process. I think this is a really good opportunity for us to really limit our quarantine situations. So I leave you with that, and if you have any questions, I will gladly answer them.
Okay. We'll take comments and questions now, and I'm going to start with Ms. Sandage.
I don't have any questions. Thanks for the presentation, and I'm excited as well about the test and stay.
Thank you.
Ms. Blackwell?
Sure. So I'm happy that there may be an option out there. Obviously, the quarantining is a big issue on my mind, as well as I think everyone else's. 94% of these kids don't, at this point, seem to need to be quarantined, and are missing out on a lot of learning that they're doing at school during that time. So you said that if we are a part of this through the state, that the masks, that is one of their guidelines, that the masks have to stay?
You have, that's correct. You have to continue to have masks in place while you're in this pilot study. Correct.
Are there any other guidelines that they require that we haven't talked about yet? Or?
It's a great question. What I would say to you is, it would be premature for me to kind of guess or answer some of those questions, because I'm going to be at the initial meeting on Wednesday. When I get some of those answers back, I'll report back to the Board and the community as to what that looks like.
Okay. And?
So I don't really know, to be honest with you, all the particulars. I just, I know the generalities of what they're looking at.
So you'll have that for us by Monday?
Tuesday.
Okay.
Or Monday, correct. Monday.
Yeah.
When we have the board.
The next board meeting.
Correct.
Okay. Well, then, I'll just wait to hear that information then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Walter?
Are these a rapid test? Are these, what type of test is this?
I'm not sure what which test it is, if it's the rapid test or the PCR test. Again, I'll find that question, or the answer to that question on Wednesday.
Yeah, we had that presentation last week about one test wasn't very reliable, or something negative, or whatever.
According to Cabarrus Health Alliance last week, when they presented, the doctors gave some pretty good information as to the reliability of one versus the other, and why we use the one over the other in terms of reliability. So that would be a question that would have to depend on the experts, and I could have that answer for you on Monday. I will ask that question Wednesday.
So this pilot project would start when? At the earliest?
There is no timeline on it. Again, the initial kickoff is Wednesday, to address all the county schools that are going to be the participants in the pilot. So these are some of the questions that we're going to find answers to on Wednesday. I just want to report to the Board that this is an avenue that we're going down to try and limit our quarantines.
I appreciate, I absolutely appreciate you trying to bring kids, more kids to school. At least, that's an option to consider. But again, our numbers here in the county are down 30% this month, which is good, and hopefully, we're down to 9.1%. I mean, at some point last year, we were mask optional with whatever the percentage was under five, or whatever it was. But I think people would like to take the masks off as soon as possible, so we need to keep that in mind.
I'll be the first one to want to take the mask off. I agree with you on that. I don't think anybody enjoys wearing this. Sometimes I have a hard time even understanding if you're understanding me as I speak with the mask on. I understand that. So I concur with you that I'd like to remove the mask, but I would tell you right now, as your superintendent, I think, I don't think, we need to stay masked and continue to make sure that we focus on keeping kids in school. But I understand your concern and your questions, and I will work hard to get those answers for you on Wednesday, and present back on Monday what I was told on Wednesday.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Kapiki.
Thank you.
Mr. Farr?
No, I was excited to hear about the test and stay policy until you mentioned keeping the mask on. I think it, when we get to a point where whatever that number is, it could be 5%, 6%, these masks are going in the trash. And I just think that we need to make sure, I mean, the test and stay is great. Great idea. I mean, I wish we could implement it today. But, you know, if they're going to let you do that and still make you wear the mask until, what, two years from now, and I'm just making a joke about the two years.
Understood.
But this thing's got to go.
Ms. Carpenter?
First of all, I thank you for looking at all options. First of all, quarantine had been a real, you know, it has been a problem. You have gotten many of the emails that we have gotten where people have, or parents have been very upset where their children have been put in quarantine, and then they've gotten the tests back, and they have not, they have come back negative, and they've lost time, and they feel like that they shouldn't have been in quarantine. And you've gotten all the emails, and you're trying to find a solution to that, and I appreciate that. But I think too, that we have, our Board, we've done something that is really paying off. I know Tim does not like the mask. There's a lot that do not like it, but I think it has paid off because we've seen that rate drop a percentage about every week, and I think that it is paying off. Some people on this Board may not agree, but I think it has, it has paid off, and we've seen it drop and drop, and I think that's encouraging. We've seen the hospitalization rate drop, so I think we're doing what is right. And I think it is good that the task force is following the recommendation, and y'all are working very close with the Health Alliance. I think that's wonderful. And thank you for everything you're doing.
Thank you.
Ms. Adcock?
Yes, I'll just say too, thank you for stepping up and trying to find a solution to a problem that is statewide, so hopefully, this will help a lot of different school districts. I mean, I am just as much, you know, ready to take the mask off, but I know that operationally, it would devastate our school system to do that at this point. But I think that we also need to let Sue Burns come up and talk to us before we make any judgments about the metrics.
True.
And just so you know, we won't be making any decisions tonight. This is just for discussion information only. So I would just like to say thank you as well. You have worked really diligently to get us where we need to be. Last year this time, we were just battling getting kids back in school. You know, we've got a huge hurdle that December with the task force. This year, it's keeping kids in school, and you have taken that very serious. There's a lot of stuff going on. The task force is working hard. We have some big decisions to make. Maybe this is our compromise, and I hear that that's a mandate for it, and maybe until the numbers do decrease down to where we're all happy with that. I don't like wearing this any better than anybody else, and I'm ready for it to go as well. I'm ready for these kids to be in somewhat of a normal environment in school. But at some point in time, we've got to make really good decisions to keep the kids in school, and that's what we're battling right now. So we welcome Ms. Burns and her information.
All right. Just before I remove myself from the podium, I just want to say, you know, I appreciate the kind words and the compliments, but I would be remiss if I didn't say to, you know, to all of you, you know, it's a team effort. If you're not pushing the envelope and encourage us to look for different alternatives and different ways, and offering your opinions, we don't all have to agree, but we've had really good discussion, and some really good recommendations have come from the Board, and you've pushed the envelope a little bit in challenging us to go out there and find different alternatives. So I thank you. You deserve every bit as much credit for our progress as anybody else. And then lastly, certainly by no means least, I want to thank our teachers and our nurses and administrators. Our teachers are in there every single day, working hard every day, and we've had many conversations, and I know how much, how much you understand how hard the teachers are working, but they're doing a great job on a day-to-day basis handling what's going on in classroom. I've been in the district for a short period of time, but I've been in the class, in the buildings, and in some of the classrooms. I could tell you, they're working very hard to engage our children and working on a daily basis to make sure that we're delivering a great education. So I think it's a team effort. I think it's everybody pulling their weight and doing their part, and it starts with the conversation here, and you challenging us to find different ways and to think differently, so I appreciate that. And again, thanking our teachers, our nurses, and all of our administrators. And if we just stay patient and continue to have good dialogue and good discussion, I do believe that we're going to come out the other end of this in a positive frame, and we won't have these masks on anymore, and people will actually get to see how handsome I really am. So thank you very much, and I'll step aside for Sue to come up.
Thank you.
Welcome, Ms. Burns, and Mr. Basilese. I think he's going to join you.
Yes, this is a team effort here. Good evening, Chairperson Grimsley, Board members, and superintendents, and all of our viewing audience. We are ready for your much awaited information. All right. So this is the Cabarrus County Schools Metric-Based Guidance for Masks. The metric-based, the Decision-Making Metrics Action Team is a subset of the COVID-19 Task Force. The Decision-Making Metrics Action Team was charged with creating the metrics that the superintendent and Board of Education will utilize when making recommendations and decisions regarding the use of masks by students and staff at school. There's our list of members. We had various stakeholder groups involved and everyone was present. It was truly a collaborative effort. The metrics team met twice, reviewed data, reviewed and discussed suggestions from team members. Then we worked together to develop a draft plan. We then solicited feedback from the full task force, cabinet and the superintendent. We then met a third time, took the feedback, made some additional revisions and finalized the guidance chart. The final draft was shared with the COVID-19 Task Force last week for feedback and it seemed fairly positive. Okay, so there's many factors that you all are considering when, when you're looking at this from various resources. So we have the Strong Schools Health Toolkit, the Community Level of Spread from CDC, Cabarrus Health Alliance, School Levels of Quarantine, Positive Cases, Other CCS School Information and Access to Vaccines. So there is plenty of information for you to consider. So this is the, the chart that we came up with. So this is going to look pretty similar to you. So it's consistent with the previous metric guidance we used when we were meeting last year. So I'm going to actually start at the bottom of the chart. And the level of community spread. This is based on the CDC North Carolina Tier Criteria for Counties. So you'll hear somebody say this is a red county or an orange county. Right now, I believe almost every county in North Carolina is in the red zone, according to the CDC criteria. But we're going to look at where we are based on your, your recommendation that we give you some guidelines. So red zone is 10% and above percent positive. 25 cases per day per 1,000, 100,000 people tracked over previous 14-period. What that means is that's 53 cases and over per day in Cabarrus County. So that first, that first bullet is just per 100,000 people, but Cabarrus County, this is what that looks like. 53 and over per day, 729 or more new cases in 14 days and a high hospital impact, which would be, I believe it was 51 or higher in the hospital. Then if you move up to the orange zone, so this is considered accelerated community spread. So we're looking at 8% to less than 10% of percent positive. For Cabarrus County, we're looking at 40 to 52 new cases per day, 547 to 728 new cases in 14 days and a medium hospital impact. So then you move up to the yellow zone. That's moderate community spread. And that is between greater than 5% to less than 8%. And that's 21 to 39 cases per day in Cabarrus County, 281 to 546 new cases in 14 days and a low hospital impact. Then moving, and that would be masks optional. I would, I would like to add in there possibly masks recommended, but optional. In the green zone, this is low community spread. So here it's 5% and below. We're looking at 120 or less cases per day in Cabarrus County, 280 or less new cases in 14 days and a negligible hospital impact. So that'd be like fewer than 20. Keeping in mind, quarantine protocols remain in effect regardless of our masking guidance. So when we say masks are optional, the quarantine regulations remain the same. So I just want you to keep that in, in mind. And quarantines are likely to increase with mask optional guidance. Also, when masks are optional, and this is continued recommendation here. When masks are optional in the green or yellow zone, the superintendent, in conjunction with Cabarrus Health Alliance, CCS staff will determine if masks will be required at specific schools where an outbreak or cluster has occurred. So the district could be at mask optional, but if we have a school or, or a group of schools, let's say that are in the same area, who are having higher percentages, then the superintendent can tell them that they have, that, you know, masks are required at that point. And then, as you know, individual school data will be closely monitored. Now that is being done regardless. All right. So this chart is based on the Cabarrus Health Alliance recommendation. And this looks very much like the one that we used last year. Same colors, pretty much the same, the same numbers. And, and that's based on the CDC COVID-19 data. Okay, so our shared goal base is keeping kids in school. So working collaboratively to maximize the number of students learning in person, minimizing exclusions and quarantines while maintaining student safety and complying with state mandated, mandated actions. Okay. Any questions? And I have John here. We're in the, the metric group together and he is much more versed in all of the information. So.
So Sue, can y'all go back to the?
Sure.
Color code. So the orange zone, percent positive, where they are?
Yeah.
Where do the, where, do you know just, or John, you may know, transferring that particular set of information into what we just looked at according to what Cabarrus County is right now, does that put us in the, completely in the orange? Or we still have issues with the cases?
The, the, from what I saw, we're solidly in the orange case, new cases per day. I'm not sure where we are with that.
If I can.
Yeah.
So if you look at, if you look at the past three weeks, you're going to fall in the orange zone between 547 to 728 new cases. You'll fall in that metric there over the last 14 days. So it would be solidly in the, in the, in the orange zone and all of that information. And again, you're at 9.2%, so you're still between that 8% to less than 10% metric. But the new cases over 14 days, you fall within that 547, 728 when you look at the data for the last 14 days.
But we're solidly in the orange zone right now.
That's correct.
So we are sliding to the percent positive in the yellow zone, but we're not, we're not as well into the cases and the population metrics.
So the community?
The community positivity rate is still at over 9%, right? So if you compare that to where we were at the start of the school year, it's down significantly. So, so we're getting closer to that 8% number, but, but we're not there. We're still in that orange zone.
Sure. But that's what I'm saying. We are def, I mean, that's been a change almost weekly, going from 15 to 14 to 13 to 12 to 11 to 9. So we've, we've done, we've made some successful decreases, but not as much as in the metrics of hospitalizations, cases per day. Those numbers are not decreasing as quickly as our percent positive. Correct? Is that how to?
Yeah. So I think it's a lag, right? So I think what you're seeing is just a, a lag effect of as the rate starts to drop down, I think those other numbers by and by will catch up, but, but obviously you got, you all are going to want to see that. Some evidence of that and not just make an assumption on that.
Right. So where I was going with that is, I know y'all get tired of doing slides for us, but I think one that would be really helpful is to be able to, that, that data that comes from the local leaders that we just saw, that's a lot of information. There's a lot of it that really doesn't pertain to Cabarrus County schools selectively. But if we could transfer that information and align it with this slide here to say, okay, this is how this aligns and this is why we stay in the zone that we do, that would be really, really good information. Actually, I think it would almost, I don't know what the rest of the board thinks, but I think that would probably substitute all those slides. We don't need all that information and just incorporate it with this one and make it one slide. Could we do that?
So just as a clarifying question, so you'd want to see the posit, the positivity rate would be one factor?
Yes, exactly.
And you'd also want to see the 14-day and per-day factors and then how the hospitals, how we're rating the hospital impact?
Right. So I'm saying if you compile that, all those slides and put it into this one and show us exactly why we're in that zone at that point in time, I think that would be real helpful.
Okay, yeah, we can.
Okay. And I think that once you start doing that slide, we won't have to have as many updates with all those other slides. Does that sound good? Okay, great. So with that, I'm going to open it up for comments and questions and I'll start with Ms. Sackoff.
Just one question is when it says in the actual yellow zone, does it have to be below 8%?
Yes, less than 8%. So 7.99.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Is that it? Okay. Ms. Carpenter?
And on this, you really want it to be, have all the factors, not just one. I mean, you could have, you could have the low positivity, but you really need the other factors, correct?
Yes, ma'am. So what happens is the positivity rate will go down first. So that means that the new cases or the positive rate is going down, but it takes longer for the other, the other numbers to go down. So I mean, that is our recommendation, that they meet all of those criteria.
Thank you.
So that's why I was saying, I think it would be helpful to have it all on one slide. So it's not just looking at one of those indicators. It's all of them in the alignment. Are you good with that? Okay. Ms. Furr?
So when, when it gets between 5 and 8%, the other one's lag, right? It's what you just said. So if it got down at the rate we've been dropping, so within two weeks from now, it's going to be between the 5 and 8. And the other's gonna catch up. And we're going to be in the category of voting on mask optional, probably.
We hope so.
Okay.
Mr. Walter?
Okay. This slide does not say that it has to meet all five of those conditions wherever that slide went. It doesn't say that. And last time, if we were referring back to what we were doing in the last winter, it was a percentage of them, like four in the green. You know, it wasn't, it didn't have to be all of them. It had to be a percentage or a majority of them to make the decision. Why the change, why would we change that?
Do you want to?
I don't, I don't, let me take that one because I'm, I want him to understand. We, they did, they're not recommending that. We can, we can do anything. It's up to the board. That's what we'll be doing this time. When we, when we decide we're going to use this, we'll decide.
The recommendation is if all five of those things?
Well, that's always going to be their recommendation.
Then that'll be the recommendation.
Well, maybe. So, but we, as the board, can decide if we want to use one of them or all five of them.
I just think we need to just be clear, clear to the public to when four or five of them hit, four of them, then, then we'll be mask optional instead of having to guess and wait for another board meeting and.
So this is going to be on the board meeting, on the business meeting. Okay? That's why we're reviewing it tonight. So next Monday night, if you'll have the slide that we just talked about, then the board is going to decide how many, if any, of these indicators we're going to use to make that decision because we have to vote again next Monday night. We do it every 30 days per the governor's order. That's next Monday night. So we'll have to do that. So this is what we're putting together to make sure the board has everything they need.
I just think that we need to be very clear to the public exactly what, what metrics it needs to be to be mask optional or mask required.
So do you think this is not very clear?
If it means all five or does it mean a portion of them that that was my question?
No, I hear what you're saying, but we will make that decision next week.
Okay. And it's not clear yet. So we'll talk about it next week. We'll vote on it, I guess.
All right.
The other question was, there's no metric. You said individual schools can be yellow or green. What are the metrics for that? What are you using to, to make those determinations?
Mr. Walter, what, what I was saying is when the district is in yellow and green, then the superintendent will work with the Cabarrus Health Alliance and staff, AKA John Basilese and, and team, to decide if, if that needs to, to happen. So there, I, we, we aren't doing those metric guidelines because those are individualized, probably much more complex decisions. Do you want to speak to that?
And so one piece of it is, I do want to come back to the fact that this is something that we were collaboratively with the task force on, right? So, so I understand that it may not look the way that you want it to right now. It's like, like much with the task force, it's a work in progress. So I'm confident that they'll, that they'll understand the feedback that you're providing and move forward with it. In terms of individual schools, so the, so maybe it's better if you just think of it as an example. Suppose that we have a situation where the community positivity rate drops to 6%, right, by Thanksgiving. However, at the Harrisburg schools over where I live, like at Hickory Ridge and Middle and High, but let's just say that the, that their, their positivity rate is very, very high. Let's just say that they're at 10 or 15% even as our rate has come, as the collective community rate has come down some. So certainly that would be, it would, we would like that very much to be the superintendent's prerogative to be able to say, you know what, the dis, while the district is mask-free, there seems to be a problem in Harrisburg. And I apologize, Harrisburg people, for picking on you just for the sake of this example. Just to be able to say, okay, for a while you guys will be in masks even if the rest of the district is not. So, so is that, is that helpful, Mr. Walter?
It doesn't really explain what the metrics are to make those decisions. That's all.
I hear what you're saying.
I don't, I mean, obviously you have prerogative to do those changes and I'm okay with that, but at least the public ought to know what are we basing that on?
I understand what you're saying.
How many clusters, how many what, something, you know?
Sure. So what you're saying is you'd like, if I, if, I don't want to put words in your mouth, so you correct me if I'm wrong. You'd like to see, if we're going to have recommendations around individual schools, you'd like to see some rec, some metrics set up for those individual schools. Is that correct?
I'd just like to know what you're looking at to make that, what you're going to use to make those determination.
Sure. Okay.
Because if everyone else is mask optional and one school is mask required, why is that?
Sure. I understand.
So I, I think it's a good question, but I think we just need to focus on the big picture here. So this is, these are recommendations the task force are giving us. This is what they worked on. And this is what they're saying that they, they felt comfortable to recommend. I think you're going down a very slippery slope if we start saying this school can do this and this school can do that. I would recommend to the board, whatever decision we make, we do it for the entire school system. That we, we don't get into, you know, separating it all because it's too much to manage. You know, again, the goal is we want kids in school. We want our kids to come into school safely. I understand the argument. We, we, we're going to continue to discuss it. But these are just the recommendations. And as, as Chair Grimsley has said, you know, you can take all of it, you can take none of it. You're going to have to make a decision on that. These are, you asked, the task force to go to the task force and get the recommendations is what they came back with. Now we're saying to the board, well, here's the recommendations. Let's have some conversations, some feedback as to what you want to take and what you would like to work with. All points are, are going to be considered.
I'm going to do that.
All right. Thank you.
Ms. Blackwell?
I don't have any questions right now.
Ms. Sandage?
I just want to say thank everybody for their time. This has been very difficult for us all and I truly understand that. My intent is not to run anybody through the wringer. I understand that this is a recommendation. The only other thing that I'll say is that, you know, if we are really and truly thinking about doing something different with the state collaborative that Dr. Kapicki recommended earlier, then you know, this may be null and void. One of the things that I heard clearly from the task force while I was on the phone, and I did not say this earlier, was that if we're going to make recommendations, spend our time and give the school district our time, then we hope that, that the board listens to our recommendations. I heard that very clearly. And I just want to say to the task force again, I just appreciate everything that you guys have done. Without you guys, we wouldn't even be in school possibly at this point. So thank you.
Okay. So are we pretty clear on what needs to happen for Monday night? Great. Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we will move to 9.04 and program choice updates for 2022, 2023 application period. And we will have Ms. Allen to the podium. Good evening.
Thank you all very much for meeting with us in small groups recently to review much of this information and allowing me to share it with our community this evening. I'm excited to share with you tonight some of the things we're doing in spite of the pandemic. So positives coming at the front of this presentation, as those of you who've heard me present know that I like to start with. So I will start by saying that our Cabarrus County Program Choice programs have a higher percentage of enrollment than ever before. 38% of Cabarrus County Schools program, students are enrolled in our, our choice programming at this point. I will also start by saying in 2021, we launched four new academy programs, or four new programs. Our Aviation Academy, the Mandarin Program at Harris Road, Architecture and Construction in Mount Pleasant and our Virtual Academy. And we have one new program that has launched also for this year. And that would be our Fintech Academy at Hickory Ridge High. So lots of exciting advancements. We also relocated our Academy of Hospitality and Tourism at, to Concord High School. So we now have 17 programs at 32 schools, serving 13,000 students. So again, a higher percentage of participation than we've ever seen before in program choice. Sorry, controlling both of these. Just forgive me if I get behind. All right. So I, I like to venture back to our goals of program choice annually because I think it helps me and hopefully it helps you to remember why our program choice programs are in place and what our goals were when we set them up and established. we set them up and established them. So the first goal established by the district when we created program choice was to, to improve academic achievement by providing challenging curriculum. And you can see there, Dr. Hill actually provided you with this graphic a couple, maybe at the last meeting, and it shows our academic rank in the state as it's progressed since 2017. And so we are academically successful over and over again. And I'm gonna show you the, the correlation to how that plays into choice in just a moment. But you will also notice, if you look at the districts around us, that others are starting to try to catch up. We are ahead of the game when it comes to choice programming, and there are other districts around us who are just now searching for what we have already created and established in Cabarrus County Schools. Goal number two, for the establishment of program choice in Cabarrus County Schools, was to provide parents with options, sorry, to select the most appropriate delivery method for their children. And so, some exciting data on that slide for you. Since 2013, we have gone from enroll, an enrollment of one thousand eight hundred and thirty students, to what you saw just a minute ago, thirteen thousand students in our program choice programs, and from six program schools to now thirty-three. Nine percent of our students participate in our program choice programs as magnet students, who participate from out of zone. And again, thirty-eight percent of our total population participates in program choice. So we are definitely meeting the goal of continuing to increase these opportunities for students and their families. And then the third goal in establishing program choice in Cabarrus County was to promote and maintain diversity in our schools. I love this graphic, and I'm really proud of it, because even though it was established long before me, and it's the result of a lot of great leadership, it, it shows that we are, our program choice diversity mirrors the diversity of our school district. This is not the case across our country. So I'm always proud to show this and, and demonstrate that the diversity in our schools is reflective of our population in program choice as well. If you're wondering, our district diversity is about twenty-three percent black, forty-four percent white, nineteen percent Hispanics. We're actually a little bit more diverse in our program choice programs as well. And we do continue to strategically place programs at our Title I schools, to allow all students to have access to our programming. So, some points of pride. Like I said, I like to start out with all of the things we're doing despite the pandemic. This year, we had thirty-six IB diploma candidates and thirty-five course candidates, who achieved over two million dollars in scholarships, and seventy-two percent of our IB graduates earned their IB diploma. If you know anything about the IB program, it is, I say repeatedly, our most rigorous diploma program. We are outperforming other school districts similar to us in our number of IB graduates consistently. So our IB programs are doing really well for students who decide to join them. We also have over fifteen hundred students in our dual-language immersion program, so amazing opportunity to offer languages to our K-8 students. And if you know anything about our, our Spanish immersion program, it is a fifty-fifty program, so we hope to maintain a balance of students who natively speak Spanish and natively speak English. I will say that my kindergartner started in a dual-language program this year, and is already happily reciting all the Spanish she's learning at home. But we do have a forty-nine percent Hispanic rate in that program, so we are just about at that fifty-fifty mark that we are reaching for. So more exciting data. We also recognized recently Beverly Hills as our fifth state-designated model STEM school, which puts us only behind Wake County for the number of designated STEM schools that we have. More points of pride, we authorized Winkler Middle School as an IB school in, in the last year, and we just finished, thank you Ms. Carpenter for participating with us last week, our authorization visit for the new West Cabarrus High. So we are excited to have results, and also recognize West Cabarrus very soon, as hopefully an authorized IB school. Another data point that I love to highlight annually, and this is the highest number that I've seen in two and, two-plus years that I've been in this role, we have a hundred and fifty-five students who came back to us this year. So that's first through twelfth grade. That doesn't even include our kindergartners, who start with program choice, knowing that that's what they want. We have a hundred and fifty-five students this year, who accepted program choice seats from private schools, charter schools, home schools, and out-of-district schools last year, meaning program choice is bringing students back to Cabarrus County Schools. I could go on and on and on with all of the positives. We launched a successful year of virtual academy under much stress and distress, including a, a brand-new facility. We launched a district-wide service initiative called Do Good From Home in our IB program. We had a national Magnet Schools of Distinction Award at Weddington Hills Elementary. We have students with congressional awards. We have teachers winning space education grants, coding and mobile app grants twice, National Sustainability Award winners, on and on and on. But my point here is that when you have engaged, targeted, purposeful education that is specific to the interests and talents of your students, you succeed. So, it might have been a pandemic for quite a while now, but I, and I would venture to say, many of our leaders would agree, firmly believe that your support of program choice has contributed to the continued academic and community successes of our schools being academically successful. So thank you for all the support that you provide to us. On that note, I will talk a little bit about the process for this year. So this is a timely presentation, in that tomorrow is the big launch of our program choice programs for this year. There is just a brief outline there of our timeline for this year. Tomorrow, applications open, actually at midnight tonight, and we will launch with our program choice fair, hopefully bigger than ever this year, at the Cabarrus Arena and Event Center. It will be alongside our college fair, which is also happening in the same location tomorrow night. If you'd like to join us, listening public, we would love to have you. And we will have eight food trucks on site tomorrow evening to participate, to come and enjoy with your family. So applications open tomorrow, our choice fair happens tomorrow, and then applications close December seventeenth. So we need families to get their applications in, in that time period. This is a very similar timeframe to what we've experienced in the past, because we're trying to keep things in a time of much uncertainty, very consistent with program choice for our families. Our schools in between now and December seventeenth will host program open houses. Those are available on our website, if families are interested to see those. And so, applications again by December seventeenth, and parent notification in February. We will reopen for kindergarten students during the month of April, for all other new applications. Couple of new things to highlight. So, again, trying to keep a lot of consistency, but have some exciting changes to share. We are this year applying, we're in the authorization phase of launching the IB career program at Concord High and West Cabarrus High. The career program, our goal in launching it is really to give access to that most rigorous diploma program to more of our students. So, the career program really focuses on aligning a career pathway with the academic rigor of our international baccalaureate program, allowing students who may have a career interest to also pursue IB coursework. So if I'm a student in the past, who was interested in health sciences, I could not finish a health science pathway in the IB program, because the IB program is so regimented, as far as the exact specific courses that they require for that diploma program. With the implementation of the career program at West Cabarrus High and Concord High, we will be able to accommodate more students in the diploma program, and give them access to those rigorous courses. We are also excited that we are adding our final class at eighth grade, our eighth grade class at Royal Oaks School of the Arts. Not final in that it's not continuing, but final that we have a K-8 school as of next year. So Royal Oaks will be complete, in that it will now have all of the offerings that we've been looking forward to for multiple years now. We have increased the enrollment at Royal Oaks School of the Arts, and mind you, they're still only at seventh grade, by over a hundred students in the last two years at Royal Oaks. We are excited about the language academy at Roberta Road Middle School. So, as I discussed about our dual-language immersion program, we are transitioning the middle-level programs for dual-language immersion to Roberta Road, to open our language academy. So students from Winkler Middle School and Harris Road Middle School in the past will now be placed at Roberta Road. Students who are in the seventh or eighth grade, or rising into the seventh and eighth grade, will actually be able to finish their programs at Harris Road and Winkler, but new sixth-grade applicants will apply to the language academy at Roberta Road. We are looking at developing a well-rounded program for those students with interest in global leadership, and, and expanded programming for them. And last but not least, we're excited to share that today, the application was submitted to the state for the new Early College of Health Sciences. So we are now officially waiting for approval from the state of North Carolina for the early college, our third early college program. And this program was launched in partnership with the Cabarrus College of Health Sciences and Atrium Health. This will be Atrium Health's first early college. I have to shout out to Ben Allred and Rusty Parker, who put in a ton of work to make this happen, and did submit the application this afternoon. We do anticipate news from the state on our acceptance of our early college, their support of our early college program in December, and then would be looking at accepting students, and looking at leadership in January. You can see there, on that slide, provided for you, the pathways that will be available for students, and again, a direct connection to the Atrium Health program, direct impact on careers in our community. So what's next in program choice? I always like to give you a timeline of all the exciting things that we have potentially coming up. Look, looking this year at developing a team to investigate a high school fine arts option. Believe it or not, with our students rising to the eighth grade at Royal Oaks, it will be time to look at where they will go for high school. So, starting to research that and make a decision on that in, in the twenty-two year. Next year, of course, launching those two new programs, and then looking further ahead to our Brown McAllister and our STEM program, as that school is rebuilt. I'm gonna say it once more, just so that everyone gets a chance to see it. There's a flyer there for our program choice fair tomorrow evening, six to eight PM at the Cabarrus Arena. It is the, the launch of our program choice season for the year. We are hoping for a big and enjoyable event, where families can meet our staff members and learn more about all of our programming options. Have some reminders that are really just beneficial for our community members. Renewals are no longer required unless a student is in the sixth or ninth grade. So if you're a third grader in a STEM program, you don't have to submit anything until you get to the fifth grade. Students should apply for all opportunities they're interested in. One application does not impact other applications, so we encourage students to submit multiple. And then, if you're, if you also are interested in possibly an intent-to-continue form, which was addressed in our realignment communication to parents last week, those are also available in our Scribbles online platform with program choice applications until December seventeenth. That is all I have for you this evening. What questions might I be able to answer?
Thank you. That was a great presentation. And I'm assuming all this is on the website?
Yes, yes. The website is your go-to resource for all things program choice. You can learn about all of our programs, apply from there, starting at midnight.
Alan, does it have, have its own drop-down box? Is it easy to access off the website?
So it's actually, when I got into this role, I asked them to put it everywhere. So if you go to departments, it's under departments. If you go to schools, it's under, or if you go to our district, it's under our district. So it lives in every avenue. It's also on the main large banner on the, on the website right now, and it's on the new and noteworthy section right now. So yes, you can find it absolutely everywhere on the website at the moment.
That is great. That is some really exciting opportunities for our students, for sure.
Thank you.
I'm gonna open it up to comments and questions, and I'll start with Ms. Sandage.
I just got goosebumps over here. I appreciate that presentation. That was awesome to hear all that, those positives. The one question I had was about, just say I'm a parent who doesn't know how to apply. If I come tomorrow, can somebody help me do that?
Yes, we have a table and thirty Chromebooks ready for you. We have staff ready to help you submit an application tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Blackwell?
Alan, I just want to tell you thank you for your energy tonight. It is so nice to talk about something that is exciting, that's going on in the district right now. I've always been a huge fan, as well as I think all of us, of the program choice. It provides so many opportunities for our students to be able to participate in programs that, that they're interested in, and, and may potentially, you know, pick up as they graduate from high school, and this will be their career. So I just really appreciate all of the hard work that you have done, as well as the team, to give our program choice probably the most amazing program choice in the state. So thank you so much.
Thank you. And that's completely due to our principals and our teachers, who are enthusiastic about our content, but thank you.
Mr. Walter?
Yeah, this is a big deal. I mean, this is what sets Cabarrus County Schools apart from a lot of districts, that we have these options, that we can engage kids, kids into their interests. And again, as you said, the teachers really make it, make it successful the way they, they're involved. I think it's exciting. I think we've got a bright future going on. Just, it's amazing to, to me, to see it works. I mean, we've made a substantial impact. As you said, that one chart that you had there, has ranked thirty-five, fifth, and now we're ranked twelve. That's, I don't know if there's another district that's, that's done anything close to that. So that is huge. And again, thank you, and everybody who's been part of this.
Thank you.
Mr. Furr?
Yes, I think you need to come at least once a month to share all the positive news, because we don't get a lot of that, and I appreciate it, because this school system has a lot of positives, and we don't really get to share it enough. But I want to go back to, I was on the board in two thousand and eight, along with Ms. Grimsley and Ms. Carpenter, and this is kind of when all this kicked off. And, you know, we need to recognize former superintendents, Dr. Shepherd, Dr. Lauder, who, with their leadership, kind of got this thing kicked off with Dr. Shepherd, and, and it's really progressed, and, and what this board envisioned that, that many years ago. So thank you very much.
Ms. Carpenter?
I have to say, ditto. But no, I was just in a curriculum instruction meeting, and I didn't get to stay for the whole thing, because we had to come in here and start another meeting. But one of the things they were talking about was our ranking on our, just our last testing. And we jumped to twelfth, above all these other systems around us. And, and this was this past year, when everybody said, oh, everybody's doing so bad, that these children have lost all this. And we, we soared above everybody else. And we come in twelfth. I mean, we did outstanding, and it's because of all these things that we're doing. And with the new early college, health college that we're doing, we're gonna be offering all these, these things that, the certified nursing assistance, the medical assistance, science associate's degree, I mean, all these things that are desperately needed. The surgical technical assistance, I mean, all these things. They, we were always right there when we need something, or the, the community needs something. We, we answer the call. That's the only way I know to say it. When, and I know when we did the first early college, that was, you know, they were, they were needing that, and the students too, outstanding. But again, I can't stress, come out tomorrow. Come out to, to see all what we're offering. I think the parents will be very impressed, and you do an outstanding job. Again, I, I thank you. And, and it is, I think that sets us apart, and I think that's why we went to twelfth, because we are offering those options. And thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Ms. Adcock?
Well, I'd just say ditto to everything that's already been said, and it's great to be a school system that really is looking into the future, and giving our students the ability to be career-ready, which really helps our community as well. So thanks to everyone that does work with this program.
Thank you.
And thank you once again tonight. That was a great presentation. Mr. Furr, right, when we started this in two thousand and eight, you know, I look back and think, gosh, you know, prior leadership really met the bar, raised the bar, exceeded the bar. And you've taken that up and with it, too. And I, we do not, I, I'll have to say, and we have to do this. We have to give our principals and our teachers lots and lots of appreciation, because they are the ones that make it happen. So thank you for reminding us that. We, we need to recognize them more often. We all tend, as someone told me this weekend, you know, we tend to talk about the negatives, because we get so much of that. So we're constantly addressing that. It's not that we don't think about the positives, or how much we appreciate everything everybody does, but you're just constantly, constantly feeling like you have to address the negatives, in order to improve the situation at hand. But we appreciate all that you do. Thank you.
Okay, and next we will have nine point zero five, which is the audit report fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, and we will have Ms. Kim Aldridge to the podium.
Good evening. I just want to introduce Adam Shapiro with Anderson Smith &amp; White, to present the audit report for last fiscal year, ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
Good evening. I will try to match the positivity and excitement of the last presenter, but it is finance, so bear with me.
Good luck with that on the audit.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Let's see, is there a way to, there we go, yeah, oh, somebody dropped, yeah, there we go. All right. All right, I'm here tonight to update you on the status of your fiscal year ended June 30th, 2021 audit. The financial statements have been provided to you. They're 70-some pages long. They have also been submitted to the LGC as of September 30th. They go through a LGC review and are approved by the LGC, and that review has not come yet. The LGC was currently about 30 days behind, so it'll be later on in the month, maybe the first, or the first of November before that approval comes through. The financial statements, the 75 pages, I'm presenting a pared-down version. The statements really tell the story of two perspectives. The accountant's perspective, where we look at revenues, expenses, and net position, as well as a fund balance perspective, which looks at revenues, expenditures, and fund balance. So the first one, the net position, the ones that accountants focus so many pages of the 75 pages on, includes the value of your buildings, the cost of the pension liability, the cost of the retirement health benefit, and it gives you a value. A lot of districts are in the negative net position, because those giant liabilities are liabilities of the state, but your portion is actually recorded within that net position. Now, you're actually at a positive net position, which is rare, because you've done so much construction over the last four or five years. This year, when you have the county paying for $25 million of expenditures, you have $25 million of revenue, $25 million of expenditures, but zero dollars of expenses. The expense comes when we depreciate that building over the next 50 years. So when you look at net position versus fund balance, they really don't compute, they really don't mirror, or give a good indication of the financial health of the board. So the presentation I have here pulls out those fund balance numbers, those key metrics that I think are most important to the board on a day-to-day management, year-to-year management basis. So the first graph here shows you your general fund cash. When we talk about the general fund, we're actually going to talk about the general fund as the sum of two funds, your general fund and your fund eight. About 15 years ago, we started breaking out fund eight into its own fund. We pull out cost centers for special revenues, like state and federal programs that don't run through your state public school fund or your federal grants fund, like NC pre-K or your Medicaid money. Those pockets of money are pulled out and put into fund eight. And so when we talk about the general fund tonight, we're really combining those two funds, because that's your local money. And so as of June 30th, 2021, cash on hand in the general fund was $26.7 million. And this was actually a million dollars more than last year. But there's a caveat to that. You have changed over the way you handle installment pay. Your summer paychecks for 10-month employees that are paid over 12 months used to be recorded, the liability used to be recorded within each of the funds, the state public school fund being the biggest one. Through converting, or the starting the process of converting to the new requirements, those installments were moved to the general fund. So as of June 30th, the general fund has an extra $4 million of liability and an extra $4 million of cash on hand to pay out those summer paychecks. That money's already been drawn down from state and federal. It's already been reported on everybody's W-2 and paychecks, but you're offering the service of holding that money to issue checks in July and August, when 10-month employees would normally not get a paycheck. So cash may have gone up, but we'll see that your fund balance actually went down. And that cash went up because you also have an extra $4 million of liability yet to be paid out. So if you go to the next slide, you can see that while cash went up a million dollars, your total fund balance and the fund balance available to appropriate actually went down. You actually used about $4 million, about 3.2 million, to be precise, of local fund balance between your general fund and your school, or your special revenue fund. The general fund used about 4.5 million of fund balance, and your fund eight actually added about 1.5. So those combined created a decrease of fund balance of about $3 million, and most of which is available for appropriation, as you see here. The next chart shows revenues expenditures, both going up in the current year, but expenditures exceeding revenues, creating that decrease in fund balance. And this is probably one of the first decreases in fund balance that I've had to come and talk to you about in quite a few years. We've had a continuous growing fund balance between those two funds. And so this is really one of the first times that we've looked and seen a $3 million usage of fund balance, but it's my understanding this has been, is a planned usage of fund balance. There is future usage of fund balance expected. We've already got appropriated 3.2 million of fund balance in the general fund for the 21, 22 budget. So chances are, we're looking at another decrease next year in fund balance. So that usage, again, was about $3 million. Go to the next page. These are the actual numbers presented in those graphs. You can see there the cash on hand, $26.7 million, but right below those assets is that liability number that I was talking about, going from 4.3 to 8.3. That is, again, those installments. So liabilities go up, cash go up, but your fund balance goes down. Your total fund balance, $19.7 million compared to $22.7 million in the previous year. Your fund balance is made up of four types. There's actually a fifth type, but you've got four. You've got your non-spendable fund balance. This is fund balance that is made up of prepaid's and inventory. Those are assets that have, the checks already been written for, so they are not cash, and therefore they are not available to appropriate. You just can't spend them. They've already been spent. There's value in having tires on hand. There is value in having repair parts on hand, but it's not in a form that you can appropriate. The other thing is prepaid's. If you write a check before June 30th for services to be provided after, that is money spent, but it yet is still an asset to you. So again, that non-spendable fund balance is made up of inventory and prepaid's totaled $1.1 million. You also have restricted fund balance, which is made up of receivables. North Carolina law is written so that you only appropriate cash that you have on hand. So if at year end you have a receivable, you're automatically not allowed to appropriate that much fund balance, because you've not received that cash as of June 30th. So that makes up the majority of the restricted fund balance. You also have assigned fund balance. Assigned fund balance is fund balance that is assigned by management, and it's made up of several categories. In your general fund, you have $3.2 million assigned for the 2022 budget. In the special revenue fund, you have $1 million assigned for usage in the 2022 budget. So of this 9.3, 4.2 million is the next year's planned usage of fund balance. You also have $2.5 million of fund balance that is located in fund eight, and by being in fund eight, it's automatically assigned. You can only have one unassigned fund balance, and that's located in the general fund, in the actual fund two. Any revenues, any monies moved over to fund eight automatically assigned, because it is deemed special revenue, and again, you can only have one unassigned fund balance per entity. You also have $990,000 assigned for retirement spiking payments, and $1.5 million assigned for future workers' comp claims. You are self-insured workers' comp. Years ago, when you converted from regular workers' comp to self-insured, you assigned $1.5 million, which was equal to about three years' worth of premiums, to set aside for the fact that you could end up with future claims for workers' comp. You can see total revenues, $83 million compared to $79 million the year before, and expenditures of $86 million compared to $77 million, giving you that decrease of $3.1 million. Any questions about these numbers, the fund balance in that general fund, or in that special revenue fund, or even on the assigned versus unassigned categories?
Let me give them opportunity. I'll start with Ms. Adcock.
And just to clarify, so you're saying that when we look at the very first slide and we see that our revenues or our expenses exceeded our revenues, it's because money has been shifted, that wasn't shifted the current budget year, is that right?
Those are, those are two different aspects. The first slide is your cash on hand. Cash went up because you did that shift of moving. The expenditures are still located in their respective funds, in the state public school fund, in the federal grants fund, but the liability and the cash are being held in the general fund to be paid out in July and August. It's like having, it's like having cash on hand that you borrowed money for. So your liabilities go up $4 million, $4 million, and your cash goes up $4 million. In July and August, those $4 million are out the door, paid to employees, and you start the process all over again, accumulating cash for those July and August payments.
And is there a statement on here that shows us in 2020 what the numbers were as far as expenditures and revenues compared to 2021?
No, and that's, one of the, one of the bad things about the statements, and, you know, which are written according to LGC templates, they're not comparative. So in order to compare 2021 financial statements, you really have to pull up the 2020 financial statements to see those changes. That's why this presentation here is presented in three years, but it's not in detail, it's just in summary. The biggest one being that liabilities line of $8,362,000 this year compared to $4,322,000 last year. Again, the majority of that is that change in installment method.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Carpenter?
Now, am I correct in assuming that the unassigned amount was, was $8,987,267?
Yes.
Was that the amount that could be spent?
The amount that really can be spent, to me, is the total of the assigned and unassigned. So when you look at what really is available to spend, it's the sum of those two.
Of those two?
Of the assigned and the unassigned. To assign fund balance, it's simply a management decision. We are setting this aside for this purpose. To me, of all of those assignments, again, anticipating that you will use $3.2 million of fund balance, but you have it yet, so there is steps that can be taken to not spend that $3.2 million, of course. One of the other assignments, the $900,000 of spiking, that is most likely expenditures and expenses you won't be able to escape. Now, you won't be paying them necessarily this year, and each year they're going to change, depending on who we're looking at for retirement spiking, but that is one of the, that's one of the amounts that's probably inescapable, but it's still your decision, management decision, to set aside fund balance to pay those when they come due.
Hey, Adam, could I ask you just for a minute?
Yep.
For those that are listening and watching, or the viewing audience, and probably some board members, can you explain pension spiking?
Yeah, when a, when an individual is hired by the district and their salary is over a certain amount, or if they are promoted within the district and their salary is over a certain amount, the retirement system does a calculation to estimate their future withdrawals from that retirement system. They also look back at what that individual paid in over the first part of their career, and if they deem that their future withdrawals were not fully funded by the payments that they made in, that difference is called a spike, that they expect the school system that created the spike, the school system that either hired them or promoted them, to cover that difference.
That was my only question. Thank you.
Ms. Farr?
I have no questions.
Mr. Walter?
I think I've had to ask this question before. What was a decent percentage that a school system should have in fund balance?
And there's, there's no set percentage. Counties and cities use 7% of their budget as a good indicator of fund balance, but for school systems, that's a little difficult. Do you look at 7% of your local funds, 7% of your tire budget? It's up for debate. I will say, of the districts, your size that I audit, you're one of the higher fund balance-heavy school districts. If I had to make a chart of green, yellow, orange, and red, you would be in the green. That is a healthy fund balance, and like I said, over the last few years, has been continuously going up. So again, this is a unique situation this year, where you actually used $3.2 million, $3.1 million of fund balance, but I really believe that that was anticipated, and there are future anticipated usages of fund balance ahead. A lot of districts this year are adding money to fund balance because of the COVID, the federal COVID money received to help offset the cost of expenditures incurred because of the pandemic. A lot of districts are also using those funds for capital outlay, like changing HVAC systems. So my understanding, this district is looking at using a lot of those funds for mediation, to keep kids who have maybe fallen behind during the pandemic, keep them up to speed through summer classes, through additional technology, you know, technology staff, because there is a cost of doing instruction virtually that isn't necessarily covered by all of your old pots of money. So a lot of those federal funds are utilized for that, but again, the expenditures this year are going up from 77 million to 86 million was more than your increase in revenues.
Thank you.
Ms. Blackwell?
No questions, thank you.
Ms. Sandage?
So if you were trying to keep up with the previous presenter, you've got a long way to go.
I know.
But, all jokes aside, can you clarify the LGC, just for the public?
It's the Local Government Commission. Our audit is conducted under a three-party contract between the board, our firm, and the Local Government Commission to actually provide the audit of management. So you contract with me, and they approve it. They also approve our financial statements and any deliverables. So that's the Local Government Commission, is what the LGC stands for. And they, again, they're in the process of reviewing your statements that were submitted on February.
Okay. I see that you have more presentation to go.
Yes.
So I'll hold my questions, maybe you'll answer them.
Absolutely. I wanted to stop here. To me, this is the most important page in the presentation. It's your local funds, your local fund balance, your, you know, your, your general fund and other special revenue fund. So again, wanted to stop here to give you time to ask questions.
Hey, Adam, let me just ask you a quick question, because it is the summarization and the most important. Where are the Esser funds in here?
So the Esser funds are not in, those are federal funds. Those are funds passed through, so there was two pots of money. There were CRF, which was the Coronavirus Relief Funds, that came through your state public school fund, Fund One, and the education stabilization. Those were made up of the CARES Act, Esser Acts, GEAR, all of those pots of money. Those flowed through your federal grants fund. All those funds are reimbursement-based funding. So those revenues equal expenditures. They don't create fund balance. You have millions of dollars appropriated. You have millions of dollars appropriated to you, but you only record the revenues expenditures for the amounts that were spent. So those flow through in some of the back numbers that we'll look at.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, after the general fund, one of the other funds that actually creates fund balance is the capital outlay fund, but the fund balance there is only a hundred thousand dollars. That fund had forty-three million dollars' worth of activity this year. Again, that is the construction on new buildings funded by the county, funded by bonds. So those forty-three million dollars of capital outlay expenditures, a good portion of those actually add value to your net position in the form of free buildings. So after that, you have your main business-type fund, your school food service fund. This fund has taken on some difficult times during the pandemic. It's very hard to feed students off-site, and also to congregate them and feed them in the current environment. So you can see that as of June 30, 2021, cash on hand has decreased, revenues have decreased, expenses have decreased, and your profit was actually negative. So that fund, this year, operated at a loss. That fund is operating under a summer feeding protocol where meals are reimbursed at a higher rate, but your participation is way down from previous years, again, because of the pandemic. So if you turn to the next page, you can actually see some of those revenues and expenses. Your federal reimbursements were actually in line with last year and the year before, but your food sales of ninety-two thousand dollars doesn't even come close to the three point three or the four point five million in previous years. So while participation goes down, so do food costs, three point three million dollars of food cost. Salaries goes down a little, five point four million, and other expenditures, one point eight million, for a change in net assets of five hundred and ninety-two thousand dollar decrease. So that is essentially a usage of fund balance. The school food service fund is a business-type fund. So when I said that there were two perspectives, a net position and a fund balance, for the school food service fund, that is, they're one in the same. The liabilities associated with pension, retirement benefits are recorded directly into that fund. So net position is fund balance. So it makes it a little difficult to just look at the usage or the change in net assets of five hundred and ninety-two thousand, because those liabilities change by millions and millions of dollars, and your child nutrition's small percentage of that is still a big number. So when I look at this fund, I like to look at cash on hand. So while your change in net assets was five hundred and ninety-two thousand dollar decrease, your cash actually went down eight hundred thousand, and that is more in line with an operational effectiveness of that fund. So that cash used eight hundred thousand dollars and has three point four million left on hand. Any questions there? After that, you can see the other funding sources, a comparison from the last three years. Your state expenditures there, the tallest bar is in green, over two hundred million dollars. Your federal expenditures, in the lighter green, is still your lowest funding source, but you can see how much bigger it is than the previous year. Your federal grant fund actually almost doubled from last year. Last year's revenue and expenditures were thirteen point three million, and this year were twenty-five point five million. Then also presented is your local expenditures, and then capital projects is presented here too, but that varies depending on construction projects. The next graph is that same, the same dollars, it's those same expenditures, but on a per pupil basis. You can see that the state public school fund provides over six thousand dollars per pupil. Local funds, over two thousand dollars. Federal funds, under a thousand dollars per student. The table for this data is on the next page, and here you can compare, again, we're looking at expenditures, eighty-six million dollars of local expenditures compared to seventy-seven million the year before, capital outlay, forty-two million, state funds, two hundred and twelve million versus two oh eight. That's where that CRF money is. The Coronavirus Relief Funds are part of that state funding, actually comes from the federal government but passes through the state. And then your federal grants fund, the twenty-five point four million compared to thirteen point three. Now even that thirteen point three was made up of some COVID pandemic money, and your typical operating federal funds are normally that, from back in 2019, about twelve million dollars. So you can see, again, doubling of federal revenues and expenditures in the current year, and much of that due to Esser, CARES, and GEAR money. And then below that, that same information, per pupil. We exclude capital outlay when we look at it in total, because capital outlay varies, and your per pupil expenditures this year, nine thousand, nine hundred and seventeen The final page, the audit report that we have issued is a clean, unmodified opinion letter, basically states that we believe that the financial statements accurately present your financial position for the year, and we had no findings related to state or federal compliance requirements, and we noted no reportable conditions or internal control deficiencies. This year, we audited your EC, CRF, and ESF funds as your major federal programs. That's your, again, your EC funds, that Coronavirus Relief Funds, education stabilization funds, those three federal pots of money were audited for compliance. And the state public school fund, which has to be audited every year, was your one major state program that we audited. And that's all I've got.
Okay, comments or questions? I'll start with Ms. Sandage.
So thanks for putting this in an easy-to-understand format. I generally don't like finance, but definitely need it. The question that I had was when you talked early on in the presentation about being rare that a school district is in, like, the positive, and I want to, I don't want to assume rare means bad or good.
Right.
So can you help me understand if rare means bad or good?
It doesn't mean bad or good. The positive net position is a result of the long, sustained growth of the school system that has created the need for numerous new schools. The school system is part of the financial statements, you know, this net position number. Those were written to basically be able to value bonds, you know, they want to know, these rules are written for the smallest school district in North Carolina, all the way to the largest school district in New York. They're written to be uniform. North Carolina is odd in that when a school system needs to build a school, the county issues the debt, but you get the asset. Now, if you had to actually issue your own bonds and then build your own schools, those two would offset each other. So while the county's net position goes down every time they build, or you build a school, because they have to borrow the money for it, and you get the asset, so that being in a positive net position is a result of lots of years of construction that have now caused your assets to actually exceed those giant non-cash liabilities for pension and retirement benefits. So it's not good or bad, it is just a circumstance of the growth of this district over the last decade or two.
That's positive enough for me. Thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Blackwell.
No questions. I appreciate what you do. Finance, to your point, Keesha, is not my favorite thing either, so every time I listen to this report, though, from you, what it does is solidify the fact that the folks that work for us do a really, really good job with our money and our assets. So thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Mr. Walter.
I'll second what Laura said, and I don't remember ever having a finding for any one of our audits that you all have done. What exactly would be a finding?
The findings come in both finance dollars or in just procedures. If you overspend an allotment, if you overutilize positions allotted to you, those would be examples of finance findings. If you paid too much indirect cost, federal programs, you're able to charge them a certain percentage of indirect cost for the overhead that those programs cost. If you were paying a teacher who was certified in the wrong area, if you were paying a person who wasn't certified at all to do a certified position, those are examples of dollar findings, and those would be question costs and findings on this report. There is also procedural, you have to get time and efforts for all your federal employees twice a year. You have to provide DPI with various reports, whether it's an EC report or Title I applications by certain deadlines. So those would be examples, if those aren't met, would be examples of findings. So there's a long list. When you look at all of the three programs that we audited as major, there's probably a combined hundred and fifty pages of compliance requirements that we go through to make sure that you've done all the steps required.
Like I said, like Laura said before, that goes back to the people that we have, employees we have with us and their attentions to detail, so.
Yeah, exactly. Absolutely.
Mr. Fur.
I have nothing.
Ms. Carpenter.
No questions.
Ms. Adcock.
Yeah, just a shout-out to everybody that works on our budget and is able to manage all these numbers and balance everything. It's awesome work.
Absolutely.
And I will echo the sentiments of the board and say thank you. Just as a general, how long does it take for you to conduct an audit?
We start planning procedures in February. We come out for a couple of days to do much of the preliminary and compliance testing, and then we come back at year end. Our audit team is currently three people. We spend about seven days, six to seven days onsite, and three to four days offsite, and then I spend another forty hours just writing these statements. All in all, it is anywhere from three hundred and fifty to four hundred hours of work to provide a seventy-five-page document and then pare it down to a thirteen-page presentation.
Right, okay.
So yeah, don't be fooled by the small presentation, because it is an extensive procedure, full of federal and state compliance requirements, audit steps regarding assets and liabilities, again, a sample of payroll items and general expenditures across every fund, so it is an extensive process to get to talking about your fund balance.
I thought that would be good information for the general audience as well. Sometimes it seems like such a condensed version of the school system's financial picture, which it is, but at the end of the day, there's so much more to it.
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for being with us tonight.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
You mentioned three departments.
Dr. Kepke, would you mind coming to the?
Yeah, sure.
I just wanted to clarify for me, what were the three departments you said you audited were in compliance?
Yeah, it was the EC funds, the Coronavirus Relief Funds, and the education stabilization funds, and those programs can actually be found on page seventy of the financial statement. So your education cluster is made up of your federal PRC, forty-nine, sixty, one fourteen, one eighteen, basically your, all of your EC PRCs. The Coronavirus Relief Funds were state PRCs, one twenty-one to one thirty-one, and the education stabilization were, again, those CARES, Esser, GEAR, those are your federal PRCs, one sixty-three down to one eighty-one, so.
And all were compliant, there were no issues?
That's correct.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I have a question.
Yes, certainly.
Can you clarify PRCs, just?
A program code, a program recording code, that's, yeah, that's, yep.
All the acronyms for all the different things that we do.
That's right, yeah.
Terminology is a must. It's one-on-one when you become a school board member.
That's right. Again, the LGC has provided a chart of accounts, broken out with fund, purpose, PRC, object code, so that all school systems use the same chart of accounts, and that PRC represents the program.
I'm not picking on you, I promise.
No, not at all.
I just think when we hear different acronyms, and they're new, we need to clarify that for the general public.
Yep.
So thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, next, board members, we will start with items under number ten, which are items for our consent agenda. We will begin with ten point zero one, recommendation for bus driver base pay increase, and we will have Dr. Mary Anbich back to the podium. Good evening.
Good evening. And Mr. Legrand is with me. We have a single slide in front of you, so you're aware that we continue to have vacancies in bus driving and in our transportation staff, and as Dr. Kepke has pointed out, and all of you have several times this evening, we teach children, our goal is to have them in school, and while we deal with all the COVID, we also deal with getting them to school, and transportation is critical. One of the things that we are competing with is counties around us who have sweetened the pot with their starting pay and so forth, and so a team together is making a proposal to you to recommend that we increase our starting pay from fourteen eighty-nine to sixteen dollars an hour for our bus drivers. This is a dollar eleven more per hour, it is a seven point four five percent increase. Now, this is the beginning rate for starting bus drivers. As you see on the slide, those who are on other levels, years of experience, et cetera, would also receive the commensurate seven point four five percent, so that we are increasing the pay for all of our drivers up to the state maximum. Once we get to the state maximum, where we cannot go beyond that, those drivers would receive a one-time five hundred dollar bonus. There are about, there are thirty-five employees who are in that place. This does not include any addition if the state, when a budget finally comes down to us, should they include increase for bus driver pay, this would be on top of that. It would not supplant it, it would supplement it, so it would be on top of that. And this is for our bus drivers, our monitors, our transportation safety assistants who ride the buses, particularly with our special needs children. The cost of this for this year, twenty-one, twenty-two, is projected to be about five hundred and one thousand dollars. It is budgeted, we do have that. I think it's wonderful that I came after that lovely audit and finances, where we talked about all of that. So that's the projected cost for this year with our finance department. In year two, when we move to twenty-two, twenty-three, the state reimbursement will apply, and it will actually cost us ongoing about fifteen percent of that because of the way the complicated formula for state reimbursement occurs. So we are seeing this competition around us, we are working to remain competitive with counties around us when we are competing for bus drivers, and so this comes as a recommendation from the superintendent, from auxiliary services and transportation with Mr. Legrand. It comes from human resources and also from our finance department that we raise the bus driver base rate to sixteen dollars an hour. Can I answer questions or anything, or can Mr. Legrand? Can I answer questions or anything, or can Mr. Legrand answer questions for you? We also have finance and transportation here. Should you have questions for them?
Okay, great. I'll begin with Ms. Adcock.
Do we know what other districts are paying their bus drivers?
Yes, just recently, Union County Rose had a raise up to $16.75 for their starting pay. CMS is at $1,575, but that includes a $1,000 signing bonus.
Thank you.
Ms. Carpenter?
This may be something that you're not, you know, we had tried to get increases within the budget and had proposed them. And you know how the state had been where they didn't pass their budget and we didn't know whether they had gotten it? Did any of our proposals go through, or what happened?
At this point, none of that has gone through or been decided upon, so we're trying to move forward. You know, given the hiring climate that we're in, and we're up against other districts that are paying more at this point, we're losing out on a lot of these hires. So at that, at this point, none of those proposals have gone through at this time.
None of any, anything we did, nothing, nothing panned out then on any of the proposals we did for them? Because I thought we did a couple things. So nothing?
Nothing that I'm aware of. Art Winnaker, our transportation director, made.
Because I thought we had did a couple things with, you know, when the salary study came through with, I thought we had, had.
In all my dealings with the state of North Carolina, and I speak with them just about every day, there was no indication given about anything about bus drivers' pay increases from the state level. That's why it's so important to look at it from a local level.
Did we do anything with the salaries, when we did the salary study?
I'm unaware of that.
Or anything?
So Ms. Carpenter, you know, I haven't been here in a while. So I think the salary study was done in 2016, is what I remember. So now that you have said that, I have a better understanding of what you're talking about.
I mean, we kept, you know, I knew that we had did, you know me, I've been here quite a while.
Yeah, you were here when I left. So now I can go back and do the research. So you're asking a question about the salary study of 2016?
Well, I mean, I know we, we kept trying to do different things, and then we did the salary study, then that, that was a little bit. Then they tried to bump it up again with the budget, because I've been on the budget committee, and I knew with the state, but I wanted to make sure where, if we had not gotten anything, where do we stand? What is the dollar amount we're at right this very, very minute? We're at 14, 14,700?
We're at $1,489. That's what we pay as our beginning salary, but that's not what the state pays. We are supplementing. So the state's salary art is.
It fluctuates. I mean, if you would look at what a bus driver would earn, it's a level, it's a pay grade 51. And the 51 can be anywhere from here to top out would be 17 and something, 45 or something like that an hour. So we are above the state bottom half of it. We're above that, but yet we're nowhere near our competitors' starting pay. So we are, we are, as Mr. Legrand has spoken, we are desperately seeking to get a, to get a bump in that so we can be competitive with the other districts around us.
So I want to be clear, Ms. Carpenter, we are already supplementing the state base pay. So that is in place. We are supplementing the base pay that the state gives us or that the state says beginning drivers make. So that $1,489 is above that. But as we are in this difficult hiring, we feel we need to do more. And then we'll see what the state does.
Other question, do we help them at all with the licensing?
Yes, ma'am. We reimburse for your CDL. We give you the three days free of training, courtesy of the North Carolina Division of Motor Vehicles, and then we reimburse you for your first-time CDL. We ask that you work for us a little bit. We ask that you have a little skin in the game on that, and then we will issue reimbursement for your CDL.
That's what I was wondering, because I know, I asked earlier if you had to have that, which I was advised that you do. And I was wondering if we did. So anyone out there viewing the audience, if you need a job, I did, as you know, I did drive a bus when it used to be you could do it while you were in school, but.
We also reimburse for our, we give you a free DOT physical as part, because now you have to have a DOT physical. So the district actually pays for your DOT physical. We have arrangement with a, with a local provider, and we pay for that as well. So.
That is one of the areas, but that's, I was curious about that. So we do need to work on that. Thank you.
Mr. Verr?
Ready to get this done.
Thank you.
Mr. Walter?
I got a couple, couple questions. Trying to better understand it. So to start with, how many bus drivers do we have? How many vacancies do we have? What's our vacancy rate? So what, you know, what's the impetus?
I have 255 currency currently on a roll, and we have 55, I ran those numbers right before I came over, and we have 55 openings. So we have, we need to run, to be fully staffed, to eliminate any kind of disruption in our system, we need about 55 drivers.
And that includes your bus subs, or does that include, or is that just full time?
That's zero subs. We need subs as well. So if you want to throw subs in there, you can, but.
What do they get paid?
I'm not, I don't have that number right in front of me, but I can get back with you on that.
So does that, this doesn't apply to subs, or is it?
It would be, but it doesn't apply to subs, it does apply to subs, doesn't it, Winnick?
I don't know the answer to that, Mr. Walter. I'm going to be honest, I can find out.
Okay.
Okay. So you're asking, does the 7.45% increase apply to the subpay rate? Is that your question?
If I'm a sub bus driver, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, if you, Art said we're looking for subs, and we're looking, we're trying to hire 50 people, right?
Right, right. We're at 14, I think it's like 1429 for the subs. So it would stand to reason that if we raised the bottom level for the, for the drivers, we would have to do that for the subs. But I didn't want to speak if that wasn't, I need to check and verify that.
I want to verify before I speak.
Okay, well, we got till next week, right? So how many hours does a bus driver have?
A bus driver can go ahead, and we have varying degrees of hours. You can drive six hours, or you can drive as many as eight. But our three-tier busing model system has a minimum of six hours. So if you want to be a minimum employee and just, and just to have the minimum work schedule, you can do six hours, or you can drive as many. We have, we have bus drivers that are driving eight hours a day.
So this translates into, what, 30 bucks a week for somebody? Is that kind of what we're thinking?
Probably a little bit more than that, yep.
And I saw you mentioned CMS is paying $1,575. Why would we, should we be paying more than they are? I mean, is that?
Yes, they're, but they're offering a $1,000 signing bonus, and we're not offering a signing bonus in this proposal.
Okay, do we still do an attendance bonus? Is that still out there? What is that?
Yes, that is still in effect for attendance, and that is something that Art and his team, they, they monitor and make sure that that is awarded on a, on a, I guess, a semester basis.
Can you explain that a little bit more? What does that mean for the person who's interested in being a school bus driver? If I drive for a certain amount of time, I'm here every day, I get an extra, I get more money?
Yes, sir. There's a, there's certain criteria that we use in our incentive program. Zero at-fault accidents, no letters of disciplinary action, and you've made it here every day. So that's a $200 bonus for the first semester, a $200 bonus for the second semester. And if you get first and second semester, we give you an extra $100. So you have the ability to make $500 extra in your performance.
Have you thought about increasing that?
That's, that's something that's always on the table, yes, sir.
I just, again, you're giving us a proposal. Is that the best bang for your buck? Would some of these other things help as well? I guess there's one school system that offers bus drivers $1,000 if they can bring somebody else, bring a friend to work for a period of time.
There is, many, many districts are performing a referral.
So is that something that we might want to think about if we're trying to hire 50 people?
Okay, sure.
I guess now is the time to try to tell us that. I think it's good that we're trying to, again, competition's hard to find people, and that's what the market is going for. I understand that. I mean, I do have a concern, though, that now if I'm a janitor, I'm going to want, hey, you know, I want something. Or if I'm a, another unpaid, you know, staff, we're going to want something as well, so. And it may snowball, but I do understand what the presentation is. So thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Blackwell?
Sure. So I do have one question, and I could just be completely making this up. But don't we have a stipulation in place, like you can't drive for another school for like six months or something before we hire you? Is that, is that something that we have in place? Okay.
I don't have that. Certain districts would require you to drive for Cabarrus County. And if you wanted to drive for another county, we, we really don't allow you to, from Cabarrus County's standpoint, and it's really a DMV issue, that if you're, if you're not specifically driving for Cabarrus, they really don't want you to drive for another district. So that's a, that's a, that's more of a DMV issue, but.
So there's no period of time that drivers have to wait between driving and between districts or anything?
That might, you might be speaking from a training standpoint. I'm not sure if, so when you go through the three days of training, and you're actually under, under the supervision of the DMV, by the time you take the written test, there is a, there's a period there that you can't do anything while they're, while they're actually performing a federal background check on you, and they're doing some other things. So there is a period of time that they don't want you to drive while they're, while they're completing their federal background checks. And then as soon as we get to go ahead on that, we put you behind the wheel. So maybe that's what you're speaking.
So Laura, Ms. Blackwell, if you're asking, let's suppose somebody, I'm trying to be sure we answer your question. If I am a driver for Charlotte Mecklenburg, and I decide I want to switch and drive for Cabarrus County, is there, if I resign, do I have to wait a period before I'm allowed to work for Cabarrus County? The answer is no.
Okay, great.
No, you can come apply with us, and if you have your CDL and you're already a driver, we'll put you through the process and hire you.
Okay.
You do not have a waiting period between the two jobs.
Okay, perfect.
That is the ideal situation, by the way.
Yeah.
You walk into our county with a CDL.
Yes.
Which is the most valuable thing right now.
Absolutely.
And we just go through, you know, the hiring process, but it moves you so far ahead of the line, so.
Understood. Perfect. And the other thing was, to Rob's point, you know, I have, I know how hard these bus drivers work. They have worked their tails off even during, when school was not in session, to do other things for the schools. I want to give them an increase. I'm just curious, is it possible that we could even do more? You know, to Rob's point, like, should we just really do the cusp of like what other people are doing? Or should we, you know, offer them a decent bump in their salaries and, and try to get some more folks coming in? I mean, I know that it's, it's so difficult right now with, for the bus drivers with this, you know, the three-tiered system and being 50 bus drivers down. You know, is it, is it possible that we could come with another scenario, like maybe like a bonus? Like a one, you know, a sign-in bonus, like they're doing in Charlotte Meck, or, you know, something like that? Like, this doesn't have to be the end-all, be-all of, this is just your suggestion, but is it possible that we could do even more?
Well, I think the way I would answer that is that this is a starting point, and that we know financially we can bear this for this year, and then as we move into year two, where the reimbursement, because it runs a year behind, and then we're not carrying the full half a million every year, I think it's a beginning point. But we have to continue to have the conversation and to take some of these suggestions that have been so well shared tonight, I have notes on all of them, back to the, to the committee, or all of us who worked with Auxiliary Services and Transportation and Finance and HR, to say, okay, this is, this is what we started with. Where do we go from here? Do we come back with additional recommendations and proposals based on what the financial, finances can bear?
Yeah, and one thing I would add to that is, we, if there is a bump in pay from the state, we are going to put that on top of this additional amount that we're proposing. We're not sure if the other counties are planning to do that, or they're just going to absorb that into what they've already, so they gave them the raise already, well, you're already above what the state minimum is, so we're going to keep you that way. So we're not sure if that's going to be the case or not, but we did elect to say that we're going, we want to bump it from $1,489 to $1,600. And if, and if the state comes out and says we're giving everyone a 6% raise, then it's going to be 6% on top of that.
Thank you.
And then before I go to Ms. Sandage, I'm just thinking, if maybe this is our starting measure, and we do not get a good response, then maybe that's another conversation, but since this has been, you know, went through finance and done all the due diligence, that maybe starting here is a good place to be, and then if there's no response, then we probably do have to look back and see if we need to do additional measures. Ms. Sandage?
So thanks for bringing this to us and, you know, starting the conversation, all of the departments who had some buy-in to this conversation and bringing it to us, because we, we absolutely need to do this. I have no, you know, questions or anything about it. What I would say, though, is to Rob's point about, you know, we're going to get other people wanting to get increases and things to that nature, is it safe to say that we are really struggling in the bus driver area right now? And that is our biggest concern, because that's what I read earlier.
Yes, that's correct. And getting students to school on time is, is a big, big priority for us. And sometimes in the morning, we're having to run double runs, which means kids are getting to school late. To no, no fault of their own, it's just that we don't have enough bus drivers to, for everyone to do a single run and to arrive on time. So to us, that's a, and I'm sure the whole board would agree, that's an issue that we need to continue to address. And the only way we're going to be able to do that, we have the equipment, we have the buses sitting on the lot. It's just having someone to get behind the wheel and drive our students safely back and forth to school.
And I would say that, you know, you triage and prioritize. And so when we look at the vacancies and we look at where we're struggling, bus drivers are the biggest. And again, because kids are coming to school late, that's not their fault. Teachers are then trying to get them caught up. So this is a priority. And I think that as we hopefully will get a state budget in, in the next month or so, that we will then be able to say, okay, what's happening? Did they do anything for bus drivers? And then look at systems around us and say, well, did you just upfront their, their raise? Or did you add on top, which is what we're doing? So at that point, we'll have a much clearer picture of really where we are with folks around us. And then we'd be able to come back and say, all right, this is where we are now that we have a state budget. This is what the state did. This is how other systems, and we would be able to truly compare ourselves better and determine whether we need to use other incentives based on whether or not our hiring is, is to the point where our numbers are not where they are now, if that makes sense.
Absolutely. Ms. Sandage, did you have something else?
Yeah, so you answered the most important question for me, which was, we can afford this. That makes sense to me. And the other thing I was going to point out was that, you know, I agree with the rest of the board members who say that this is a starting point. I would hate for us to add things on to this and that slow down the process. So if we're starting here, I would say yes to this today, and then let's add going forward. Thank you.
I think, Ms. Sandage, that is the most important part, that we are starting, and we need to go ahead and get this on the table and then move forward. It's, it really is a huge piece of it to not have an answer from the state, because we don't know. And that will be another piece of that. With that being said, I think it's probably a time, since Ms. Carolyn.
One quick question.
Okay.
So if I'm a person, I'm watching this presentation, and I'm interested in being a bus driver, how do I learn more information? I know Art's done a pretty good job with the website, sir. How would somebody get more information about being a bus driver for the Paris County Schools?
You can call our transportation offices and speak to Mrs. April Kobel, which is my HR specialist there. And it's 704-260-5500, 704-260-5500, and ask for Mrs. Kobel.
Thank you for that piece. And to finish, I would say that when Ms. Carpenter made the statement about the last salary study being in 2016, I think you confirmed that. That probably sounds right, because I don't think we've done it since I've been back on the board. Maybe once we have our state budget, it's time to do another salary, an all-systems salary.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's time to take a look at that, just to see where we are, especially after what we've dealt with in the last couple of years, and people, you know, elected not to continue in the.
We'll take a look. I just happened to see that in the office and saw that one had been done. One was done when I was here in, I think it was 2013 or 14, something like that, and then I saw one in 2016.
That is great. That sounds like we're long overdue. Just in time for you, right?
Oh, thank you so much.
And I know that you'll need to coordinate that with, with Dr. Kapicki as well.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, with that, board members, are you good for this to be placed on the consent agenda for Monday night? Do I hear, hearing a yes from all? We will place that on the consent agenda. Okay, now moving to 10.02, Policies for Approval on Second Reading. We will have Ms. Burns back, and I will. We will have Ms. Burns back, and I will do like we normally do, I'll read the policy and then the description. Policy number thirty-six twenty, Extracurricular Activities in Student Organizations. Policy number, uh, let's see here, five thousand, Schools and the Community. Policy sixty-one forty, Student Wellness. Policy eighty-three ten, Annual Independent Audit.
And I, I received no questions on any of these this week, so I'll answer any questions anyone has now.
Okay, comments or questions? And I'll start with Ms. Adcox.
I don't have any.
Ms. Carpenter? Mr. Ver? Mr. Walter?
Yeah, we addressed this last week's, or last month.
Great. Ms. Blackwell?
No.
Ms. Sandage? Okay, you are good.
All righty.
Those will be placed on the consent agenda.
All right, thanks.
Moving to ten point zero three, Recommendation and Approval of the R. Brown McAllister Elementary School Construction Manager at Risk firm, and we will have Mr. Tim Lauter and Mr. Brian Cohn to the podium. Good evening.
Good evening. Up here or not?
Oh. He just got married. We need to say congratulations.
Good evening, Madam Chair members of the board. August of this year, we received responses from twelve firms interested in the R. Brown project. The construction committee met and reviewed those twelve responses and narrowed that selection down to the four firms that we felt were most qualified. We then took those four firms and interviewed each of them. The four firms had forty-five minutes to present to us. That was followed by fifteen minutes of question and answers by the committee members. After a lot of internal discussion, we have arrived at the recommendation from the committee that Rogers Builders be selected as the Construction Manager at Risk for the new R. Brown McAllister project. And with that, I'll try to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, and I will start with Ms. Sandage. Questions or comments?
I don't have any. You've broken down how you guys did this election process, and that's good enough for me. Thank you.
Ms. Blackwell?
Can you just give us a couple of, have we used them before? If so, for what schools?
So, we have not used Rogers Builders before. This would be a new firm for us. The four firms that we did shortlist were Shellco, who we're currently with, working with on Roberta Road Middle School, Edifice out of Charlotte, New Atlantic Contracting out of Winston-Salem, and Rogers Builders, so.
So, what set them ahead of the pack?
You know, several things, when you look, they're all really good firms. But the things that we felt like set Rogers Builders apart from the others, they currently have two, they have one elementary school project ongoing in Charlotte Mecklenburg that is a active campus replacement. They are ongoing with West Charlotte High School that is an active campus replacement. So, they have experience in dealing with projects on environments that have students and staff. They're, they're a firm that has a very deep resource of subcontractors, so the buying capacity that they will bring to the table will be an advantage to us in this current climate.
Makes sense to me. Thank you.
Mr. Walter?
For the audience, can you explain Construction Manager at Risk one more time?
You want to do it? Construction Manager at Risk, we hire a construction management firm to basically oversee the project for us and handle all the contracting portion of the project. They guarantee a maximum price based on the pre-bid estimates, and then once they have all the final bids in, they pull that in and they work all the project and guarantee that maximum price for us.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Ver? Ms. Carpenter?
No. Laura, ask some questions out, we'll ask them.
Thank you.
Ms. Adcox?
No questions about this, just, I went out to the site, which was really great, and got to look at the plans, and they walked us through the woods, and it's going to be a really great school.
Thank you.
Did you see that whole Ms. Carpenter talked about?
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. I appreciate that, for you saying that on the record.
You just could not resist, could you? Ms. Carpenter, are you good? Okay, I'll just make a comment to echo, that is a great firm, and very large in resources and deep with subcontractors, so good job, that's great.
Yeah, I think it, it's also worth noting, you know, part of their executive team, you know, lives locally in Cabarrus County. Two members on the project team currently have kids within Cabarrus County School District as well, so added benefits.
Great. So, hearing consent agenda is okay with everyone?
Yeah.
Okay, you're good to go, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we will have ten point zero four, School Improvement Plans. We will have Mr. Matthew Phel to the podium.
Well, good evening. I think this is the one time a year you see me. So, good evening, everyone. You have the school improvement plans. Hopefully, you've had a chance to review them, but you still have, of course, until next week when you vote on those plans. I want to do a shout-out to our schools, our faculty and staff, all the work they've put into these plans, and we ask that you approve them next week. Do you have any questions?
Okay, and I will start with Ms. Sandage.
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Ms. Blackwell?
No questions, thank you.
Mr. Walter?
Okay, so they were voted on by the school before they came back to you, is that right?
Yes. All schools are required for their instructional staff to vote on school improvement plans, and I get an assurance sheet with that vote to ensure that they've been done.
Now, do you look at the plan from last year compared to this plan? Do you do anything with it other than just pass it on to us, or is it?
Well, I mean, I, I review them quickly, but I didn't do an extensive review. I get them about two weeks before I get them to you, and a lot of that work is just me cleaning them up, making sure all the pieces are there, that kind of thing. So, I don't have a time to do any kind of extensive review, like comparing last year to this year, anything like that.
Sure. And then the other question is, we're calling it School Improvement Plan, but on, on the documents, it says Comprehensive Progress Report.
Yeah, that's the name that NC STAR, the program that we're required to use, gives the school improvement plan. It's essentially the school improvement plan.
Okay, thank you.
Matthew, just for the viewing audience, I know we all kind of take for granted, everybody knows, but can you kind of speak to this as a federal mandate that's pushed down?
The school improvement plan?
Yeah.
Is a state mandate.
Well, that was always part of the federal guidelines as well.
Not to my knowledge, but it could be part of ESA or something, requiring you to have a plan in place. But the specific school improvement plan guidance that I get comes from general statute